First, for a silent prayer. And please keep in mind, you know, I know it's Storm Harvey and I know my last name is Harvey, but nonetheless, let's pray for safety of the folks who were there and stuck in that horrendous weather. So we will do that and then we will have a pledge of allegiance, moment of silence. Okay. Everyone together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Let us begin with the Committee on Finance.
Two different ways to do what?
No, I want to know how that ends.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here tonight to ask approval for the vending contract. J.C. Vending has been the contractor for many years. He was the sole bidder and we're asking approval this evening to continue.
All right. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner? There we go.
Yeah, I think it's the third or fourth year. The percentage went down.
It does. It's the same for the-
Usually you see the third or the fourth year, the price goes up.
True.
But the percentage, you know-
Right. It went from 15.5 to 15, I believe, at the third year.
Yeah. Why? Any reason for that?
It's just the way he bid it. And being the sole bidder, we didn't have anybody else to go against.
Excuse me, just because he's a sole bidder doesn't mean we can't negotiate.
Excuse me, through the chair.
Just because he's a sole bidder doesn't mean we can't negotiate. We're not locked in. Did you just, did we, did we ask him about that or are we just taking it at face value?
We're not locked into the bid price.
You're not linked into what he bid. I mean, didn't the seniority just change that we have the right to negotiate these things? So I don't think the sole bidder makes us have to accept his proposal verbatim.
I would have to ask Rockwell about that. I wasn't aware of that.
Well, I think it would be worth, as Commissioner Therryell puts out, a discussion unless we've already engaged, which I hope we haven't, and just say, we'd like you to put that back.
Okay.
All right, can you-
I was not aware that we could do that, honestly. So I would have to ask Rockwell about that.
Commissioner Awa, what I will do, if you could report back to us in some form on that question before we vote on that, that would be great.
Absolutely.
All right. Commissioner Therryell, are you okay? Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Vanstone.
While we're asking questions, if for some reason we cannot negotiate the rate, I would ask if we could negotiate the length of the contract and then just make it a one-year, deal with the first year, and then we can put it back out to bid and maybe get a more favorable response next time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before I ask mine? Okay. Do you know why there, with the vendors, we have, we don't have a consistent number of vendors in the schools? I notice Kennedy has, I don't know if this is the one, Kenny has a, you know, Willby has seven. Do you know why that is?
Eight and seven, I'm sorry. Well, as far as-
Vending machines, yeah. How many, the vending machines, we have a different number of vending machines?
I don't. They provide and they let us know what they have in there, but it's not dictated as far as how many they need to have. So it's, it's been left up to the contractor that wins the bid.
All right. Then I'll, I'll direct that question there. Are there any additional questions? Are we all set? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
I would ask one thing that this, until we get further clarification, that this is not on any type of consent calendar or anything next time.
All right. If we can keep that on, off of the consent calendar, that would be great. Okay. Commissioner, I mean Commissioner, Committee of the Whole, Mr. Mortensen or Ms. Mort- you have to excuse me because I left my glasses on the van, so. Mortensen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. You're on.
I appreciate that. I'm here on behalf of Dina to present to you, I know we discussed this previously, we working, we're working with Amplify. Amplify provides the M-Class system for ELA, for the elementary schools. And we have entered an agreement with them to reduce the total cost by $10,000 if we agree for them to use student scores so that they can use those measures against their system to improve it and make predictive measures. So we get a $10,000 reduction in our contract with them. All of the, obviously Corporation Council has looked at this, we've gone back and forth, they are abiding by the Privacy Acts set forth by the State of Connecticut. And they'll be using student scores in grades three, four, five, and six. And again, we'll, we'll get a $10,000 reduction in the cost for Amplify as a result.
Thank you. Commissioner Therryell.
Certainly, I'm concerned about the reduction in cost, but I'm also concerned about the actual cost. What is the actual cost?
For using the entire M-Class system?
Yeah.
The, the actual cost is, with the reduction, 167,577. Correct.
Okay. That's with, it would have been 177.
Correct.
Without the $10,000 reduction. Well, certainly, anything that we can do to improve the test scores is very much needed. I'm glad to see that we're starting to start a little initiative between the Curriculum Committee and this. I am very concerned over the secrecy of this. I'd like to know more about the scores so the general public can know more and how we intend to improve them. I don't necessarily want to name the schools, the, each individual student in the schools, but I'd certainly like to compare the schools. And I noticed in the, in the document, it says, oh, no, we're not going to compare the schools. But the state compares the schools. State compares the schools, state compares the school district. In fact, it compares all 169 towns. On the CMT, science portion, the SATs, the Smarter Balance Test, of which, of the 29 schools that we have in Waterbury, not one, not one met the state average. Not one. That's deplorable. So I hope, whether you call it teaching to the test, whether you call it regencies, whether you call it some other initiative that is going to somehow improve the overall outcome and the scores on these tests, which are deplorable. And every, every chance I get, you know, I'm always in the corner punching away at this. Just to remind the public out there that the score at Willby, my alma mater, on the SAT was 4.7 last time. 4.7. Someone said to me, is that on a scale of 1 to 10? I said, no. That's on a scale of 1 to 100. So 96% of our kids, almost 96%, failed the math portion of the SAT. Now, the scores on the, on the SBAC, the Smarter Balance Test, the average score that we had to hit was around 39, 40%. We didn't even come close. Didn't even come close. So, you know, in the past, we've seen four, five of our schools achieve success, but this time, not one of our schools achieved success. Not our Magnet Schools, not our new Career Academy High School, where you would think that these schools would be capable of at least, excuse me, reaching the state average. I say it all the time, it's getting worse and worse. I don't know where we're going with this. I don't know what's happening when the kids are in math class at Willby. Oh, by the way, the scores at Kennedy, let's see, the scores at Crosby were 6% and the scores at Kennedy were 8%. So overall, we have greater than 90% of our students failing math on the SATs. These are students that are going to go out into the real world and they're going to have to work. Fortunately for some of them, they don't have to make any change because the cash registers do it for them. But they're not all going to get jobs in McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts and these other fast food places. You know, I'm not talking about the, you know, we often hear of the top 5%, the students that go to college, the two, the students that create no problems behavior-wise. I'd like to see, in summary, I'd like to see more of this data shared with the board and the public so we can actually have a rationale or the public can see that the $166,000 that we spent was well worth it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Therryell. Any other questions relating to items? Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you. Just from my own knowledge, our use of M-Class internally is not blind. We know where stuff is. We can compare and contrast our own stuff, right?
Yes, it's also part of our tiered system. It's required by the State Department of Education to have an evaluation system for students at the elementary level.
So we internally could show every school, compare and contrast, see what's going on?
We do it every year for the board.
That, that was my recollection. This is specifically keeping the results blind for this outside company, Amplify, to utilize for their purposes.
Correct.
So they will take our scores, redact any information from stu-, students. Would it also redact school and district?
It's student, yeah, any student identifiable information. I can get back to you on if it redacts from the school or district. I don't think it does because I think that's, that's data that's public knowledge if, if, so, if FOied. So I think in this case, it, it doesn't, but I can get back to you. I know for sure that it redacts any student identifiable information so that they can do their own internal study and, at a cost of $10,000 reduction for us.
All right. So worst-case scenario, there'd be no, no student ID, but in their reporting, in their perspectives going forward, they could say that, you know, in 2017, in the Waterbury School District, Carrington School had this, the next year they had this, we project them to do this, that, and the other thing.
Correct. It's for predictive measures on how students will perform on the Smarter Balance Assessment based on how they're, how they're performing in the Amplify system.
And at the risk of repeating myself, it will never say, Mary Smith in third grade got this-
Never.
...and fourth grade got this.
No.
And we're getting 10 grand shaved off the, to, to participate in this plan, they're going to give us 10 grand off the bill.
Correct.
Are there anything else that comes out of this for that, that we sacrifice for that $10,000?
No.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Darren. All right. Item number three, let's see. It is actually Wendy. All right. It's actually Wendy. Boy, what is this with the names here?
Trying to confuse you.
Different people playing different parts. Committee of the Whole requests approval of agreement with Springfield College at no cost to host school counseling intern. Wendy Owen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Wendy Owen. So I am here on behalf of the department to request approval for an inter-, a contract with Springfield College for an individual to do their practicum in school counseling. This individual is a current employee through the Civil Service Department and they were granted an educational, paid educational leave to do their practicum. So this particular contract is, for four months, it's at no cost to the district.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Tom Vanstone, Commissioner Jason Vanstone.
Can you just clarify? She's an employee of the city.
Correct.
Are we paying her while she's doing an internship?
My understanding is that it's in the white-collar contract, so I would probably defer to Mr. Brinker to answer any specific questions with regards to-
I'm just trying to connect the dots to no cost.
Are we paying her? Yes.
So what's the no-cost part?
The no-cost part is the contract with Springfield College. We're not paying Springfield College.
We're not paying the college, we're, but it's not really no cost.
It's no increased cost. We don't, we would pay her, but in this case, because we pay her, she remains with us for those years afterward.
So we're paying her to go to college?
We're paying her for the internship.
We're paying her to go to college.
My understanding, it's in the white-collar contract. It is. It's a contract.
It is in a part of the white-collar contract, yes.
So any employee of the Education Department could get paid to go to college?
No. Not any employee. This is when she applied under the contract and there was a review. It was also participated in with the City Personnel Department because of the white-collar contract and it was felt to be appropriate that we would pay her to retain her once she graduated or finished the internship.
We have a number of similar items on the agenda tonight. So are all these no-costs going to be an employee?
They're nothing pertaining to an employee. They're no-cost for students.
I'm still having a lot of trouble connecting the dots here.
The other contracts for both school counselors and social workers are truly no-cost because they are not employees.
Okay. But this one is an employee who we pay a salary, but it's being told to us that it's here at no cost.
There's no additional cost between the district and the school.
No additional cost is much different than no-cost.
I agree.
I would like that noted, please.
Okay.
No additional is very different than no-cost. So thank you.
Understood. All right. Commissioner Vanstone, Jason Vanstone, and Commissioner Therryell.
Without getting into who the individual is, because I don't think that's important, is this person someone we would need to pay to replace in addition to pay them to do the internship?
I have collaborated with Melissa Baldwin and she is working on providing coverage while this individual does their practicum.
Would that coverage come at an increased cost to what we're already spending?
No.
Okay. And to go back to the contract language, so within the collectively bargained agreement between us and the white-collar union?
Between the city and the white-collar union, which includes us, yes.
Okay. There's some kind of language of saying, should someone have the opportunity to do an internship, we will grant them a paid leave of absence to go fulfill that?
It says we can.
We can.
It doesn't say we must, it says we can.
Okay.
But continuing under our theme of growing our own and working to increase the number of minority employees that we have, we decided it would be in our interest to pay this person.
And I don't necessarily argue with that thought process. So this person goes, does the internship, and it's four months long, comes back to us. In the spirit of keeping our own and growing our own, is there any language to the fact that we pay you to go do this, you're ours for a certain amount of time? Or in all reality, should they come back and decide to, they could resign from the Waterbury Public Schools 28 hours later?
I'd rather read the contract language, because I haven't since she applied, and give you an answer based on that than answer you off the cuff, if that's all right.
Okay. I appreciate that.
All right. Commissioner Stengel? No, Commissioner Therryell, I deleted the first and then Commissioner-
At the expense of getting into the line of questioning, what's your line? I'm more concerned about the people that would be coming here and properly venting them, making sure there's no former arrest records, drug testing, et cetera. You know, all of the students that deal with our students should be properly vented.
To answer that question, they-
They are. In her case, no, because she's already an employee.
Yeah.
And the law wouldn't allow for it. But anyone else coming in, we do that.
The students coming from the county.
Even contractors that worked on the West Side Roof this summer, they all came in and we did background checks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stengel?
Thank you. The person in question, is, is the degree she's seeking a bachelor's degree or a master's degree?
This is for a master's degree program.
Okay. And it'll be a master's degree in counseling?
Yes, that's part of her, towards her getting, obtaining her degree.
And certification?
Correct. Ultimately, her certification.
And then, and the actual plan here is that she will be employed by us in that field of counseling at some point?
Should there be an opening, she would apply.
The person now is, you say white-collar union, is that, would that be a para or is it clerical?
It could be a paraprofessional, it could be an ABA therapist, it could be an attendance counselor, I'm just giving some examples of staff that are-
Okay. But it's somebody working with children at this point?
Correct. Correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? All right. If not, let's move on. I believe you're, you're playing the same role here as we go down the list, so-
Yes.
The next-
This should be easy.
Agreement is with Western Connecticut State University. Yeah, just to acknowledge, our President Brown is-
Good evening.
Good evening, President Brown.
Is at the table.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
You're quite welcome.
I apologize, the traffic was unbelievable out there, sorry. So, request approval of an agreement with Western Connecticut State University here, so, number four.
So once again, this is for an individual to do their internship or practicum in school counseling. The contracts, not to skip ahead because I know that items four, eight, and nine are with state universities, these are truly at no cost. These contracts are a little bit different. The term is a year and we do have an arrangement or at the end of the year, if it's mutually agreed upon, we could renew the contract for an additional year, up to five years. And it's at the discretion of the district how many interns to take on. So that, that is the agreement with both Western, Central, and Southern for the school counselors.
Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you. Through the chair. So just to clarify, these are campus students coming to our town to do internships.
Correct.
We're not, they're not on the payroll.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, good. Got that clear. Okay. Number five. Mrs. Baldwin is coming to the table.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Evening.
I'm requesting a-
Why is that? You bet.
My apologies. Ooh, maybe it's just me. Okay. I'll just speak loudly. I'm requesting approval for a contract with Columbia University to host social work interns for a one-year term, the same five-year contract extension option. It comes at absolutely no, no cost. It's similar to other social work internships that we've offered in the past to university students.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. I think it's the same deal.
It is.
Number six?
Same thing. Requesting approval with UConn to host social work interns, five-year, one-year term with a five-year contract option.
All right.
You wearing a wire?
Number seven?
Request approval for a contract with WCSU to host social work interns for a one-year term, five-year contract extension option, no cost to the district.
Okay. And number eight, sorry, Commissioner Stengel?
Thank you. Just for more clarification, when the person is an intern coming from Columbia or whatever and they're, and they're all of a sudden landed in our district, who are they working with? Who's overseeing them? Are they working with another social worker or they aren't?
The, the social worker that they work with has to have certain qualifications. These are social work interns that come in that are going for their masters, they're in their masters year, so they have to do a whole year in our district with a certain number of hours. Our social workers volunteer to have them and the social workers have to fulfill a certain number of years before they can host any, any students. So usually it's a three-year, they have to have, already have experience in social work, school social work, and they have to do a certain amount of time with that person and overseeing them. They're not, they're not left alone with children. I mean, they are background checked and all of those things, but it's very similar to a student teaching opportunity, it's just a longer period of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, number eight.
I have an answer, if you have a moment. Want to finish your Vanstone's question?
Sure.
Would it be all right?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner, they're required to stay with us for twice the length of the time that they're given for the educational leave.
It was a four-month leave, so they had to stay eight months.
Yes. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Brinker. Okay. Number eight.
Department is requesting approval of a contract, for a contract with Southern Connecticut State University at no cost to host school counseling interns. Once again-
Same deal.
One year, at the end of the year, if it's mutually agreed upon, we could extend it for an additional year, up to five years, discretion as to the number of interns we take on.
Okay.
And it's, it's basically the same thing. It's generally a school counselor who takes on an intern who has a number of years' experience. There's also collaboration with the, the college because they have a supervisor that oversees interns as well, so there is that collaboration between our individual who's assigned to supervise or who voluntarily takes on the intern and they collaborate with the college.
Okay. And number nine, I guess we're working with Central Connecticut State University.
Same, same thing. We're requesting-
Great.
-that the board approve a contract with Central.
Okay. I just, just, no, just an observation, in terms of these connections with all these universities, are we, are we linking it at all with the work of recruitment that Mrs. Hayes is doing or did you already discuss that?
No, we haven't.
Because it seems like with these great connections with these colleges, this might be an opportunity to kind of bring in that other dimension?
Absolutely. I've had several conversations with Johanna. So moving forward, we're, I would really like to have further conversations with her and see if we can expand our internship agreements with other colleges. So that's something that Johanna and I have talked about.
Yeah, I think it's, it's part of the strategic plan that we-
No, absolutely.
-that we've looked at. And I think because you do have these relationships already with the schools and the school faculty, that it would really be an entree, if you will, to the schools to really solidify in a broader sense. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
I think that would be good. Look forward to seeing that. Okay. Number 10. Mrs. Baldwin.
Try this again.
I might be from work. I took all my jewelry off.
Okay. So we're requesting approval for an agreement with New England Home Care to provide nursing services to students with disabilities. The contract is for two years, it's for $227,230.50 over the course of the two years.
Commissioner Vanstone?
I'm not sure if it was the other one. Thank you, Chair. Is this in-home or in-school services?
It's in-school services, it also includes transportation from the home to the school and then back again at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just curious, how many students do you think we serve in this way, historically or currently?
I did a little bit of digging today, because I thought that might come up, between four and six a year. Generally, the cost is, is not this much. In this particular case, the student is traveling a distance which requires a higher cost associated with it, because it's, it's a good 50 minutes from her home. We also looked, just, just for background information, we also looked at transporting by ambulance, which we have done in the past when necessary, but it, the, the cost was almost double what this is costing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vanstone, I mean, Theory...
So, the total cost is what? And four to six students?
No, this is for one student.
One student?
Mm-hmm.
$227,000?
Mm-hmm.
For one student?
Yes.
So, if we have six, it's six times this amount?
No. This is, this is a different case, this is a special case, I would say. Generally, our costs for a student don't go, don't go over the $50,000 mark any, in any year.
I mean, it's quite obvious, when you look at this number, I mean, a quarter of a million, close to a quarter of a million dollars. Obviously, this student has some severe physical, mental, social, psychological...
Physical, yes.
Except, you know, so this is for one student?
It is.
So, if we get another one, we can double that, right?
We would, except we, we look at other ways to support students who have medical needs outside of, of what we can provide to them in schools with nurses.
Not to get too personal, but what did we do for this student in the past?
She, she had, she's had a nurse her entire life. Her school recently changed, so that the added cost with the transportation at the beginning and the end of the day, it added up quite a bit. Just the hourly rate alone was, was very high, to do that.
So, we're talking about the transportation issue, and we're, are we talking about the cost of paying, assume this child has a full-time aide?
Yes.
And the cost of paying the full-time aide is included in this?
The aide is part of the program that she goes to, we're not paying extra for the aide, we're just paying for the nurse in this. She does not have an aide at the school that she goes to.
Is the, is the nurse with the student?
All day.
All day?
Yes. It's about 10 hours a day.
Thank you very much.
I'm just, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vanstone. Jason, no, go ahead.
I have a simple question, have we ever worked with New England Home Care before, and if so, do we have a positive, negative, neutral relationship?
We have a good relationship with them. There's about, there's three agencies that we work with for nursing services, and they've been very consistent in providing good nurses to us.
And the 113 annually, just to make sure I understand it, covers that 10 hours a day, five days a week, for the nurse, plus transport back and forth?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, are any of these costs reimbursable with Medicaid?
They are reimbursable through the excess cost grant, through Medicaid.
Well, nursing services, I would think are...
Yes, they are. I just wanted to make sure with Wendy, but yes, they are.
They are, they are. I, I think it would be helpful for us, as we move down, to see how much we are reimbursed?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that would help us to get an understanding of, you know, the, the true cost?
I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vanstone, then Commissioner Awa.
Thank you, Chair. These types of costs have been something that have really pulled on me for a lot of years, you, both of you know that. I don't think the public realizes what needs we have to work with, and that we owe these It's, it's difficult, it's a hard conversation. We sat in your office for over an hour just a few weeks ago, and some, you know, it's, it's very difficult, and that's why I've been always a big proponent to make people understand why we have this obligation. It's tough, it's a tough conversation. But these young people, they need us to support them, and to give them the education that they have the right of every able student in our district. It sounds like a lot of money, and usually I'm the one looking to pull the money down, right? But when it comes to special education, this is something that I've always had a pretty good background in, but thanks to the district, you folks have taught me a lot even more. It's tough, it's a real tough conversation. Do we need help from outside? I believe we do. I believe this is an area that either federal or state funds should help us out, but until that happens, it's our bill, and we must pay it. So, a little contrary to what you normally hear from me, but these, these bills need to be paid. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's Commissioner Awa, then Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you. The only thing I just wanted to point out is when, we're talking in terms of, it's an awful lot of money, $113,000. When you break it down, it's $62 an hour for this, so, in the world of healthcare, that's not unreasonable, and it also includes transportation, so it's $62 an hour, based on what we're doing, I just, let's put everything in perspective. The $113,000, yes, it's a lot of money, broken down to take care of a student, it's $62 an hour for healthcare costs, it's, I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
Does the nurse start at the student's home, goes to the school there all day with her, and then returns back home with her?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks for that clarification. I guess the next one on the agenda is Commissioner Sweeney.
We have several revisions and new policies. Melissa, if you've got a minute?
Yep.
I'll get yours out of the way real quick. You have the first one, nondiscrimination, we had to make some changes that were required by ADA. If you recall, we changed the wording on the compliance with the Age Discrimination Act to as amended, so that we will capture the changes going forward. There is a, the addition of the term disability shall be broadly construed, the question of whether an individual's impairment is a disability under the ADA shall not demand extensive analysis. And then there were a number of legal references that needed to be added. Is that about it?
Yes.
Okay. And you also had 6171 and 6172...
Let me just see if there's any questions on that one. Any questions on that? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. 6171 for special education, a new required policy, and 6172, alternative education, also a new required policy.
Correct. These were, these both were crafted by CAE, they're, they're very, they're somewhat broad, but we're already doing all of the things that are in these policies, they're just, they're required by CAE, so we are putting them, we put them together.
Okay, any questions on those? Okay, yeah.
Recruitment and selection, this had come before, the board before, there was some formatting that did not get picked up, you will see that in yellow and strike out on the first page, that had gone through policy but didn't come through on the formatting, and there was a missed reference on the second page. Those are the only changes there.
Any questions on that? Okay, next.
Okay. Attendance requirements for course credit or promotion was updated, we adopted the CAE policy, but there is a section that relates specifically to how we handle those absences in this district, and that has been added at the end of the policy, along with some updated references.
Is this the policy that includes the changes of counting in-school suspended children as, as attending school?
That's also in here, that, that part we had already changed.
You had already changed it, okay, thanks.
There's a couple of policies impacted by that.
All right, any questions? I guess, continue.
Okay. Attendance requirements for students under 18 years of age with respect to truancy, the revision there is the one that President Brown just mentioned, the revision that in-school suspension is not counted as an absence.
And that's one that the Waterbury Board of Education brought before the legislature, so thank you for everybody's lobbying efforts. Okay. Okay. E?
Okay, 11E. Again, some update, we had added sexual assault to the title, there is a section that requires the Board of Education will post the telephone number of the Department of Children and Families, Child Abuse Hotline, care line, and the internet web address that provides information about the care line in each district school in a conspicuous location frequented by students. Such postings shall be in various languages most appropriate for the students enrolled in the school, and on the last page, there is an additional legal reference.
Is that something we're doing now?
Yes, we are.
And languages, different languages?
It's been, we've been doing it.
We've been doing it.
Yes.
And I sent out posters last year...
Right.
...to all the building administrators.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions on that one? Next.
Okay, and the next one?
F.
Yeah. This one is Wendy's. There you go, Wendy's, wait a minute. I'll let you take this.
Oh, the Sexual Abuse Prevention and Education Program, so this policy has come out of Public Act 14-196. Just to highlight a couple of features of this policy, we have to have a sexual abuse and awareness assault curriculum, and this is embedded within our current health curriculum. There is an opt-out procedure, it is noted in Section 6, it's posted on the website, it's also sent out through newsletters. If parents do not want their children to participate, they simply provide written notification, and they can opt out. Also, providing students with resources and referrals to handle, handle these difficult or dangerous situations, providing students access to counseling and educational support, we do that through our social workers, our school psychologists, providing mandatory training to all district staff. I designed a PowerPoint presentation for staff that includes all the essential components listed within the policy. I also developed a PowerPoint presentation for parents that was presented to the parent liaisons, it was also presented to the social workers and the school counselors, and they conducted parent presentations. In April, all building administrators were sent both links to the DCF mandated reporter training, as well as the sexual abuse awareness and prevention PowerPoint, to show that to their staff as well, and I am collecting sign-in sheets that the staff have viewed those presentations.
Great. Any other, any questions? Thank you. Next.
What's that?
I think that's it.
This one here. This is Wendy's?
I think we have G.
Wendy, hang on, because I...
Sure, we did strike the second sentence.
You want to jump to that one and take that one? She did this one. Okay, that's Joe Gorman. Okay, you're good.
I'm good.
Okay. That's it. Yes. Yep. F is Joe Gorman, referral for sexual, system for sexual and reproductive health services, this is also new policy.
Evening.
Good evening.
The policy that is in front of you is somewhat of an outgrowth of the Healthy School Communities for Successful Students partnership that we had with the CSDE. One of the deliverables in the grant that was passed by the board was that we come up with a statement to have a mechanism whereby students could be referred to community partners for counseling for reproductive health services, HIV testing, pregnancy testing, so on and so forth, so the policy statement that is in front of you is indicative of that effort, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have about it.
Any questions? Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
I can ask questions, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you too. Joe, this is, I'm, I'm going to ask this question, but I'm really kind of posing this to the committee as well, because we did, the committee voted to remove, there was a list that was provided...
Correct.
And, you know, I think I'm okay with kind of why we removed it, but in thinking about it, my question is, then what are we providing the staff in regards to referring our students who are in need? How are we, what are we doing to help the staff so that they can help our students if we remove that list?
Right, understood. I believe that there's several ways that we can do that, there are continuous updates through public health that can be delivered to students through health education and through liaison with the school nurses and with the school-based health clinic. I actually believe in the wisdom of the committee in removing that, because the more I thought about it was, things can change. Things can change very rapidly in the healthcare industry, so we may have had people on the list that were no longer in business, or had had some type of difficulty all of a sudden, there might be new providers that were not included on the list, so keeping that as a matter of procedure and fluid, I think, was, was actually a wise choice, and I think actually strengthens the policy. So, I, I certainly support the move to do that. We can certainly, you know, address that through staff training and through just simple emails and updates of community providers, so that's not an issue.
All right, so, yeah, I think it is, that, that's why I'm bringing it up, because the nurses references...
Right.
That there will be a list that the nurses will provide, it was an if, if then something. So, my question again is, what list are we providing, or what information are we providing to the staff? Because it says it will refer to a list, still refers to that.
Right, school personnel, yes.
Right. And, and we're thinking the nurse, okay?
Among others, there would be social workers, psychologists...
If I, if I recall correctly reading it, that it said if there is a, if there is a facility that's there, they refer to that, if not, then the, the school nurse. So, the, so the question is, what, are we just going to allow the nurse, when it comes to the nurse, to just look this information up herself, him or herself?
Right.
What are we going, you know, what, what is that? I mean, because at this time, when we get this type of referral, we want to be pretty quick with, you know, who we're referring our students to.
Right.
So, what resources are we providing those nurses? Because there was a list, and I can understand that it's, you know, sometimes it, you know, changes, et cetera, but what are we doing to provide, make sure that they have that information in front of them?
We're very fortunate in Waterbury that we have a very close partnership with the Bridge to Success, and one of the things that the Bridge to Success did, and that we had also done with our SPPT program, which unfortunately is now folded due to funding concerns, but what we had done is identified youth-friendly health providers, and BTS continues to do that, and that is a very, very simple way for us to, to saturate the school environment with information that would help this process, so that a school psych... information that would help this process, so that a school psychologist, a social worker, a teacher, a health teacher, a PE teacher, a math teacher, a school secretary that a student trusts enough to confide in, you know. The policy allows for that because it identifies as school personnel. It doesn't say just the nurse. I mean, it's a very, very private type of thing for a student and, and, you know, meritorious of strict confidentiality, and you don't want a student to not feel that they can't reach out to an adult for assistance. So, I mean, I think we're in pretty good shape with that. If we didn't have BTS, I'd say, yeah, we really have to have something even more formal for that. But I know that, I mean, all of the schools are constantly in touch with the, with the whole Bridge to Success, advertising of products and services, and who to go to, and so on and so forth, and, you know, their alignment with United Way. I think we've got to, I think we've got, are in pretty good shape in terms of making sure that people are informed of what options are out there for students.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm a little nervous about that, because, again, I'm not really questioning why we removed that list, but if you have a list, that's what you refer to. And in a time when we need to assist the students with referral, I'm just a little, you know, squeamish about where that information's going to come from for the nurse or whomever it is.
Right.
That, so, I just hope we clean that up a little bit so that the nurses and/or whoever else it is that, that the student is going to has that information readily available to them i-if there is a need for it. So, I just, just a little bit.
Right. Yeah, I understand your concern. The, the other side of that coin is to make sure that presentation of resources is done so in a balanced way.
Yeah.
I think that was part of the concern of the committee as well. And, and I'm not sure that I have a stock answer that will solve all of those issues, because there's a lot of variables in terms of the situation, the site, the person, and there's a lot of variables there. But, I mean, I think if we, if we clearly communicate that we want a balanced approach to this, I think then that makes it a lot easier for everyone involved to, to know what they can and cannot do in helping a student who's asking for assistance.
All right. So, I'm a nurse.
Mm-hmm.
Nurse Harvey.
Nurse Harvey. Not hurricane.
Not hurricane, storm Harvey. Even though we shouldn't really laugh about that. That's just tragic. But, okay, I'm Nurse Harvey, and I have a student that I want to help and refer them to whomever. All right. So, that student is sitting in front of me. I'm looking for the resources I can provide. Where do I go? You're saying I go to BTS?
No.
Where do, where do I go to get that information?
No. I was suggesting BTS is the source of information to keep staff apprised of what the community resources are that are available.
Okay.
So, Nurse Harvey would be counseling this student after, you know, striking up a conversation. It could be simply that the student wants some counseling. It could be that the student wants a pregnancy test. Could be that the student wants to get an HPV vaccine. Whatever the situation is, you know, you would have available certain options to refer that student to that particular provider. I mean, on the bottom line here is, I don't think we want our schools actively engaged in making diagnoses and treating.
No.
Every single condition under the sun.
No, no.
So, if we're not going to do that, and we're talking with students who have these conditions, we want to be able to do the right thing by the students, which is to get them in the hands of trained professionals who can best assist them. And that's really all this policy is about, that we don't want to wall off the schools from kids seeking help, because one of the biggest things that's been identified is accessibility to healthcare. You know, so we're, we're trying to put in a system whereby we can empower kids to go and get what they need in terms of sexual health services.
Yeah, and that's understood. That's not my argument. Our argument is, how are we going to, how are they going to refer? Who are they going to refer? And when you remove the list, then how does that nurse refer that student? That's my only concern.
Right. I think.
So, so that's all I'm saying. I'm not, I have no problems with the policy.
Right.
I have no problems with, I just want to know how will Nurse Harvey be able to refer that student to a provider or whatever? And this, that, that's my only concern.
It could be as simple as a student is sitting there, and you make the initial phone call and encourage them to talk with the person on the phone. You know, if they, they don't know how to navigate, how to go about making an appointment or something.
Okay.
It could be that simple.
But I will have that information available to me, correct?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I think for one of the rare times, as a policy, we made a determination to separate policy and procedure. This board should offer policy to direct the employees that we employ to create a procedure to accomplish something. So, actually, this is a case in point of what we should do more often. We should say, here are your guidelines. We're paying you money. Go implement it. And this is a very good case of that. And that's what we did with that list, the list. The policy was well-written. It was put together well, but then to give actual direction is not what a policy should do. That's what procedure does. So, I'm very happy with the way we put this out. I think we did the right thing by removing the list. We should not be telling in policy, here's your 12 organizations to go try to work with. Whether they go out of business or not is beside the point. Policy should not do that. Procedure should do that. And if you give through procedure, which we rely on you to build, the resources people need, then we all did our job. So, I'm very happy with the way we reworded and reconstructed this policy. Thank you.
Commissioner A. W.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to Mr. Gorman's comments regarding BTS. I just want to make sure everybody says, BTS is a partnership of agencies throughout the city.
Yes.
It is not an entity that's going to provide these services.
Right, yeah.
And a simple click on their website will take you to a resource tab that goes to a website that's called Get Connected Waterbury. That's where they're going to look at. So, you can skip right over BTS and just start publicizing the Get Connected Waterbury, but I will tell you, if you look at it, there's, you would have to know what you were looking for to find what you're talking about. And so, I think that website could use a little bit of work to make it more user-friendly, specifically in this instance, in terms of these types of services that people would be seeking. So, I would encourage y'all to take a look at it. But again, we can go right to Get Connected Waterbury, which is, which has been a product of BTS. But, again, it's a partnership, and we just want to make sure that we're not confusing that BTS was somehow delivering services.
Right. I didn't mean to give that impression.
No, I know. I'm just clarifying that.
One of the follow-ups to that also, Commissioner, is that with the School Health and Wellness Advisory Council, we'll be constantly getting input from people. How could we improve this procedure as we go along? And we'll, we'll develop that, and, you know, hopefully, we'll get better and better at it, but we got to start somewhere.
Yep. Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Also, and I don't think it should be undersold, the professionals in our district, the nurses, the guidance counselors, it's not all their first day.
Mm-hmm.
So, if a patient, or if a student comes in front of them, they have most of that list already in their head.
Right.
So, you know, I trust the professionals within our district to have the majority of the information in their head already, and I further trust them that if part of something they're looking for isn't readily at the tip of their tongue, they know how to find it. And I trust the staff, yourself included, to make sure that they are afforded all the options out there to help that kid in front of them make the best decision for them. So, between the professionalism on the front line, the online resources, and your guidance, and our terrific policy, I think we've set up the ability for any student in any of these cases that needs our assistance in finding the right choice for them, we've given them all those, those options. So, thank you.
Well, I can assure you that I'll do everything I can to make sure that that does occur, number one, and secondly, on the bottom line, what this policy intent is, is that the board has the back of teachers so that they know that if they refer a child, that they're not going to be in trouble for referring them to counseling or whatever they refer them to. That's really what this is all about. It's just giving that tacit endorsement to school personnel to do what they feel is in the best interest of the child in a referral.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, other, is that it?
One left.
One more. You're on again.
Eleven G. On stu-, I'm sorry, on campus recruitment policy. This has been updated to comply with the Ever Student Succeeds Act, which is the successor to No Child Left Behind. Two things in particular is that ESA designates that a student 18 years of age or older, rather than his or her parent or guardian, may request in writing that such information not be released with, released without his or her prior written permission. And ESA requires the release of the student's name, address, and telephone listing unless, after giving appropriate notice, parents, guardians, and students 18 years of age or older of their right to opt out and to require, after such opt out, written permission to release the information. And then there's an updated reference for ESA.
Any questions? Okay.
Liz, just one more note on opt-out, is that we're going to have a conversation with Will Zuda about the ability to put opt-out forms on Power School, make it easier for, we seem to have a lot of these where we need forms, might be easier to, for parents to access on Power School, so.
So, you're looking into that?
Talk with Will.
Thank you.
After, after the initial push, he's, yeah, he's kind of, he's kind of swamped right.
I think that's a good idea. All right. We're moving on. Number 12, Committee on School Facilities and Grounds. Number 13, did you have something?
Go on.
Number 13, Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, Use of School Facilities by Outside Organizations and our waiver requests. Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Usual bugaboo about a couple of these, and I'd like to kind of get that conversation started again about clear procedure here. There's a couple, and who they are are really not important. This is more of a general statement that are requesting waivers on overtime hours and charging admission to the event. I'm all for helping out our locals. You know, people in town pay a lot of taxes, and they should have access to their buildings. But at the same time, if they're making a buck off it, there has to be some consideration there, too. So, if, if we could kind of renew that talk, whether it's policy or whatever, committee is going to handle this, I think we need to, again, look at who gets stuff, when they get it. It's got to be free, as well as getting rid of that catch-all category of someone gave them a waiver at some point in time so they get it forever and ever. So, I'm not going to hold up any of these, but I think, you know, we saw the last budget round, which is still in flux. At some point, we have to stop hemorrhaging money. So, that, my point on number 13. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner A. W.
My, my one point is, as we begin to do this, and these outside requests come in, that we make sure we're running these gym requests through the ADs, so we're not taking away gym time for our athletes. I'm just noticing one here that I hope it's 8:30 PM, not AM on a Sunday, on a Saturday and Sunday, because then you would have the gym tied up for the weekend for an outside entity. So, I just, and it's for the whole school year. So, again, I just want to make sure that who's ever doing these is running these by the ADs, and that the ADs are signing off on them.
They do run them by them, Commissioner. One, one point on the first one, the soccer group.
Yeah.
We were withholding that for now, pending clearance with the football team and the AD at Crosby Soccer and Football on our new field. They want it every Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 6:30 to 8 until November.
Right. So, I guess my concern is, does that mean our kids have to get off the field? I, it's, it just concerns me that if, you know, we have a team that makes it into the postseason, that there's an unusual practice schedule. I just want to make sure that our students and our student athletes come first.
They do, absolutely.
Commissioner Hernandez.
That's a good point, because also during, after school hours, you know, we have Century 21s, we have other groups in the schools, and there are a couple of people that tie up the gyms for the whole year, and those kids inside the facility can't use it. So, making sure that, that everybody gets a shot to use the gyms in all the schools would be nice.
We have a history here of groups using the gyms for the season, not in conflict with the athletic teams, but with the elementary schools.
Mm-hmm.
They sign out for the year. I'm not going to go into the names of those groups. Y'all know them more than, better than I do, anyway. So, they do sign up for the year, but they would not conflict with a coach using the gym, but they might keep the 21st Century program out of the gym. That's a possibility.
Yeah. It, it happens.
Yes.
Which is kind of sad for those, for those kids.
It's sad for anybody to be out. They're both, both groups are Waterbury students.
Exactly.
We need to work on that.
Figure something out.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Superintendent's notification to the board. Lots of coming and going. And I don't believe we have an executive session tonight.
No.
So, yes.
At the regular meeting, I'll be refraining from any involvement with my nephew being hired.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So, I'll recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you. We could pull, want us to pull that, we'll pull that name out, okay? All right. I guess we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You too.
Sorry, I was late. And welcome, Kathy. Your first meeting.